Coming up next is the City Council Committee at the Hall. Would the Clerk please call to order?
City Council members Brown.
Here.
Hazen.
Here.
Hershey.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Okay, and I didn't say call to order, so we're called to order. Okay, approved the minutes of the previous meeting from April 8th and April 15th. Is there a motion to approve those?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Are there any corrections to the minutes? It was moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jared.
No, by Dean.
No, Dean.
Jared?
Dean.
It was Dean, okay. Mary Alice and Dean. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed that motion carries? Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none. We have three cards for public input. We have one from Aldris Melinda Carr. Does not wish to address the members but has continued concerns about Dr. Ellis' subdivision sewer issues, equity, and historic impact. And one from Reverend Evelyn B. Underwood. Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood, an IDOT traffic stop report. You do want to address the members. Would you like to speak now then?
At the time.
At the time, okay, I see. At the time. So we'll hold off on that one, and Daryl Cruz is going to speak at the time as well. So that's all I had for public input at this time. Do we have any presentations? Seeing none. Staff report. Mayor Marlin had a letter.
Yes, I just wanted to read a brief statement. I know there are many questions and concerns regarding the traffic crash between a vehicle and a pedestrian at the intersection of Main and Vine on April 11th, 2019, which tragically resulted in the death of Urbana resident Shelley Taylor. On behalf of the people of Urbana, I wanted to convey our deepest sympathy to her family and friends. The driver was issued a traffic citation for failure to exercise due care. Because a traffic citation was issued, the matter is now in the hands of the Champaign County State's Attorney's Office. Public release of information related to specifics of the crash is at the discretion of the State's Attorney's Office. The city cannot comment on the specific facts of the crash as they relate to the actions of either the driver or the pedestrian at this time. What I can share with you is that the city has taken several measures in response to this incident. The Urbana Public Works Department conducted two separate diagnostic tests on the traffic devices at this intersection. The Urbana Police Department has conducted an additional test. All three tests indicated that the devices were functioning properly. We understand there's concern about the layout of that intersection as it pertains to safety of pedestrians. The City of Urbana shares concerns for the safety of all who travel in our community, be they bicyclists, pedestrians, or drivers. Accordingly, I've directed the Urbana Public Works Department to initiate a third-party study of the intersection to evaluate the functionality of the system. We'll keep you updated as this evaluation proceeds. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other staff reports? Mayor?
Doesn't look like any other staff are going to make this announcement. I did want to remind people that there is a neighborhood information meeting tomorrow night, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. in the Lewis Auditorium at the Urbana Free Library. And this is concerning a proposed planned unit development on Lincoln Avenue between California and Oregon Street. So that's tomorrow night, 6:30 p.m., Lewis Auditorium.
Okay, thanks. Next on the agenda is IDOT traffic stop report. I guess, should we do the report first and then the public input, or the public input first? Okay, we'll do public input first. Daryl Cruz.
Good evening. I just hit my throat real quick. I hope you had an opportunity to read the information I sent you at the end of February, and also on the email I sent this past weekend. And I'd really like to get to the crux of the presentation as I read through it and make several comments very quickly, if I may. First of all, it is very positive to see that the overall disparity ratio has dropped to 1.30, or 3.5. But I would caution overstating the result of this disparity dropping because I think there's two statistical issues at work that may account for that. And one is, if you will notice, that the percentage of African-Americans in accidents has increased 4% from the 18% to 22.02. And I'll speak to that in a little bit. That can significantly affect the disparity, and also on the relocation of the non—excuse me, the step stops to streets that evidently are more representative of the composition of the driving public, has reduced step stops to .85 for African-American drivers. And I think that's the first time in 14 years that I've seen an African-American disparity below 1. And so I think that's very laudable in terms of the significance of just using data to change the location of where there's injury-prone accidents and doing step stops. But that fundamentally does not address the issue. And I'd like to remind you that if you look at the disparity ratio, if you use— and I don't believe the African-American drivers in our community increased 4% from the 18.07% that was used in the past. And if you use that 18.07, the disparity ratio of non-step stops goes to 1.97, almost 100%. And so if you go and use the census data, the disparity ratio goes to 2.0, or 140%. So I would suggest to you the disparity ratio is somewhere within that range. It's not specifically related necessarily. And I think Melissa alludes to that, that you need to be very careful when you assume that the 2.2— or 22.2% of African-Americans involved in traffic accidents may not truly represent the proportion of African-American drivers on the streets. And so I just caution you to keep that in mind. And so I would really like to go and focus on the non-step stops because this is a—this is a area that I'm trying to make sense of, and I can't from the data. And here's the reason why I find this so confusing. Is that when you look at the non-step stops, you'll see that there's a racial disparity that's present. But you also, when you look at the motivation for stops, which I mentioned, the motivation for stops, 98% of all stops are traffic issue or community caretaking. And one must remember that traffic issue simply means officers are trying to enforce traffic laws, hopefully equitably throughout the community, to make our streets safe and reduce accidents. And community caretaking is to stop the driver for the purpose of educating. At least that's the definition given in the report. Only 2% or 3% of them are targeted patrol. And at one point in time, and I would go back three or four years, because the targeted patrol, and they use the example as a pretext for a stop to do an investigation, actually makes a very small— it's a very small percentage of all the stops. So if, in fact, Urbana police officers are enforcing traffic laws equitably throughout the community, and their motivation for the stop is simply a traffic violation or community caretaking, then it would seem like there should be no racial disparity. But we know that that's not the case. And then, in fact, there is a racial disparity. So the question is, why does the racial disparity now seem to reside in non-step stops? I was suggesting to you that the reason may be twofold. It may be inadvertent or intentional in police officers stopping certain drivers, that they aren't accurately reporting, or the location in which they're conducting these non-step stops may be—there's just a very few words left. If it's okay just to finish, is just like the non—like the step stops, maybe they're being conducted in neighborhoods and locations that are disproportionately unrepresentative of the community as a whole and overrepresented of the African-American community. If that, in fact, is occurring, either of those two explanations, they can be corrected. Because policing, if, in fact, the motivation is a traffic issue or community caretaking, if it's done equitably, race should not be a part of how those stops occur. And so I'm having trouble reconciling the data saying one thing, and yet recognizing that there's a significant racial disparity in the other. And so I hope that the UPD can address that question. I hope you will ask that question. And I hope in the next presentation, and if you need additional data, and I gave some suggestions in the email of what the data might be, that you can ask of the UPD, that you might be able to determine why this apparent inconsistency seems to exist based on data that we're assuming is accurate at this point. And that's what's stated in the report also. There's possibility of error, but by every intent, UPD has said they are presenting accurate information as best they can. So I'll take them at their word. So I'm trying to reconcile that, and I can't.
Okay, thanks, Daryl.
Yeah. Thank you.
Reverend Dr. Underwood?
Are they going to give a report after they're allowed to do it after they give their report?
I think they were going to go through what was online.
I probably won't understand it any better anymore. So I just go on and just say what I'm going to say.
Okay.
I'm Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood. Right now, I've been going over this—I went over this data, or data, and I've been at the meetings when our representative—former representative was here. And I went—I had all of that information. Well, at this time, there are some individuals and organizations who wants me to give a report. And I'm not understanding it any better. And I've had Mr. Cruz—he's been on my radio program several times. And individuals have asked me, as a result of my supposedly background and looking at it, I'm still not understanding it any better and able to reconcile it. And I see now, I don't feel very badly since Mr. Cruz, who's more educated in the area than I am, and he's not understanding it. So I'm going to have to go further in listening to the council. And I was thinking that maybe—it's been talked about, that maybe the council, with all the other things you people are doing, you might want to get a commission or a committee to work with this. And I hope y'all might consider it because it's more confusing now than it was five or six or seven years ago. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't know if I can answer the people who are looking to me for an answer. I know I can.
Thanks. Okay, that's all the public input I had. Is there a presentation? Melissa? Melissa Haynes, our police statistician person.
Crime analyst.
Crime analyst, that's it. Chief Seraphin.
Okay, so we have prepared a presentation that echoes what's in the report. I've got the sections labeled as the report, so hopefully you've had a chance to look through the 30-page monitressity.
Welcome. So tonight, we're also going to—we're going to do a couple of things. I'm hoping that tonight, that the document you received, 28, 30 pages, coupled with this report that we're going to go through the slides, hopefully brings a little bit of clarity to this. I have not sat here before during the course of this particular presentation, but I'm hoping that there is a little clarity so that we don't have—I don't want it to be confusing. There are multiple audiences that we're talking to tonight. There's—obviously the mayor and council, new folks up here. There's a lot of people in the community that want to hear this. There are police officers that are going to watch this. So there are other people that want to see this, and we're hoping tonight that we provide you with something that you can—that is digestible for everyone. And so I will now be quiet, and Melissa lead this. Thank you.
Yes. So got an overview of the different sections that we're going to cover, and this mirrors what's in the report that you should have and is also available online. We'll go through the amount of traffic stops that Urbana Police has done. We'll talk about benchmarks and what that means, and then looking at disparity ratios, the different decisions that are made with the decision to stop, and then the decisions that are made after the stop, so the outcomes of the stop, and then looking a little bit closer at searches and arrests made during traffic stops. So going back to 2004 is when IDOT, the Illinois Department of Transportation, legislatively required that all police—all police officers, when they made a traffic stop, filled out a traffic citation or a traffic warning and submitted that information to IDOT, who then compiles it and puts out these reports. So this—this data has been collected by every agency in the state for a long time. I think Urbana does it pretty well. So we're going to run through all of the different information that the officers note down on—the ticket, and then in subsequent police reports if those become necessary. So in 2018, Urbana Police Officers conducted 3,514 traffic stops. You can see that the—the amount varies over the years. That's higher than the last two years, but it wasn't higher than—the previous, you know, four years before that. So statistics-wise, what I like to do is look at a rolling five-year average. So I'll take 2018, and I'll compare it to the average of 2017, 2016, 2015, 2014, 2013, average those together, and compare it, and see what's the—what's the range? What's the standard deviation? And is what we see in the present year far enough outside of that to call attention to it? So in—in academic literature, you'll look for something that's—that's more than two standard deviations outside of the mean. In practice, I like to flag anything that's more than one standard deviation outside of the mean. So any—any of the numbers at the bottom for the Z-score, that's—that's above a 1 or below a negative 1 are things that—that are notable. So even though we did more traffic stops this year than we did last year or the year before that, it wasn't more than the year before that, the year before that, or the year before that, which also goes into the five-year average, telling us that we actually did fewer traffic stops than our five-year average, and that was within the range that we would expect based on the practices that we've done in the past. There's also a geographic component to traffic stops. And so we have—we've got mapping software now where we're able to take the location of the—of the traffic violation and put pins on a map. When you do it with 3,500 traffic stops, though, you've got a lot of these pins that—that overlap. So the way that—that's most useful to visualize it is with a density. And so that takes each point, and it looks—it does a mathematical calculation to say, okay, how many points are within whatever radius I define, which is usually about a quarter mile of—of this point? And then it shades it kind of like a weather map. So it'll give us a density of the traffic stops that Urbana Police Department is conducting. Now, this is not perfect. We're missing—it—that kind of overshadows Windsor Road. We do a lot of traffic stops on Windsor Road. We have—we've got accidents that occur here. We've got accidents with personal injuries that occur here, but the intersections are more spaced out. So it's not—it's not a perfect—it's not a perfect visual representation, but it's better than—better than this one. Okay, moving on to Section 2 with the—with the benchmarks. So we know the demographics of the drivers that we stop. It's indicated by the police—by the police officer on each traffic ticket. And you can see over time, starting in about 2012, the percentage of African-American drivers that Urbana Police has stopped has been about 30% pretty consistently. It was higher in—in 2011, it was higher in 2010, higher in 2009. But—but since about 2012, it's hovered pretty close to the 30% range. Caucasian drivers hover pretty well around the 55% range. Hispanic driver is between 3% and 5%, and then Asian drivers between 8% and—11%. So there's overall—most stops are—if 55% stops are with Caucasian drivers, about 30% stops with African-American drivers, and then a lower percentage for Asian and Hispanic drivers. So what does that mean? To come up with a disparity ratio, we take the percent of the—of the race of the stopped drivers. So if we were looking at the African-American disparity ratio, we would be taking 30%. That's the numerator. To come up with the ratio, we divide it by the percent of the race of all of the drivers on Urbana city streets. It's that—that denominator that's a little bit harder to approximate. So when IDOT, as they've done since 2004, has collected all of their data, what they—what they use and what we don't use. IDOT uses the 2010 census data, and that—they include anybody over the age of 14 that has a residence in the city of Urbana, not accounting for half of the drivers that we stop in Urbana don't live in Urbana. So this is—this is not a very good measure, but this is—if you look up the IDOT report, this is—this is the denominator. A better proxy to estimate the—the drivers on Urbana city streets are drivers that are involved in traffic accidents. And so there aren't as many traffic accidents as there are traffic stops. And I know that, you know, different patterns of construction and different weather conditions can—can cause some fluctuation year to year. So I use a three-year rolling average to try and level out any of the—of the large fluctuations that—that may occur year to year. And so our best estimate of the racial makeup of drivers on Urbana city streets are that 22.26% of the drivers are African-American. 62.23% of the drivers are Caucasian. About 8% for Asian, and about 5% for Hispanic drivers. That's what—we had talked—we'd spent a lot of time talking about this right after I—I first started, and it's—I believe the—the best choice for—for the denominator. So when we take those numbers and divide it out, you get the disparity ratio. And so using—using African-American drivers again as the example, we're taking a 30% of the drivers that are stopped in Urbana, dividing it by 22%, and the number that we get is 1.35. So that means that an African-American driver in Urbana in the year 2018 was 35% more likely than we would expect based on a random distribution of police patrol to be stopped than—we would expect. So that number has fluctuated a lot in the past, but African-American is the only one that's consistently been above 1. If we go back to 2009, 2010, 2011, it—it had been as high as 2.11. So an African-American driver was 111% more likely than we would expect based on the driving population, based on random patrol, to be stopped. So that number has—has gone down quite a bit in the past, but it's still—we're still running a 1.35. Caucasian driver has gone—gone up a bit. So Caucasian driver is 11% less likely than we would expect to be stopped based on the estimated driving population based on random patrol. Okay, and then we also collect, starting in 2016, the motivation for the stop. This is something that's in addition to what IDOT requires. So we don't have data that goes back any further than—than 2016. And so this is the officer will note what their motivation was for—for initiating the stop. And as—as Mr. Cruz had pointed out, most of the stops are for traffic issues and community caretaking. A much lower percentage is for targeted patrol. When we break that down by race in 2018, it's—it's 85%, 82%, 85%. It's pretty—it—it seems to be pretty clear-cut. There are some variation, but it's not—it's not outside of what appears to be a—a normal variation. For targeted patrol, Asian drivers, very low percent there, 0.32. But we're looking at a—at a very small number to start with, so those should be interpreted with caution. Looking at the—the reason for the stop, that is some—that is the legal reason that the officer initiates the stop, the—the Illinois traffic violation. So most of the time, that's for moving violation. Sometimes it's for an equipment violation, and less of the time, it's for a license and registration violation. You will note that the equipment violation is higher than it's been in the past, and we'll talk about the reason for that towards the end. And my slide has not been great on this.
Do you need my numbers?
Yes, lovely. So that's supposed to be the percentage on top, but apparently it didn't transfer over very well. So when we do the—the step versus the non-step stops, that's the—the step is the selective traffic enforcement program. And do you want to brief on that?
So selective traffic enforcement program, and I'm sure you've—you—the members of the council have all heard this before. These—this was one of the areas that we looked to really focus on for 2018. And in—in that particular area, we are very precise in directing where the officers need to be. And we do that by looking at—not me personally, but looking at traffic crash areas. What are the—where—we—where have we had the biggest issues with regard to those crashes? And so that's where those patrols were really focused on. In times past, there had been other more anecdotal issues where Mrs. McGillicuddy might call and say, "They're speeding by my house," and we might put a—a—a detail out in a particular area to watch. But this was really tried to hone in on that. And that's—that's what the step detail is, is exclusively a—a traffic enforcement where we are directing it precisely where the officers would go.
And so for the last two years, that number has run. About 38% to 39% of all traffic stops have been part of the—of the step detail, where an officer is—is assigned to the step detail and is not doing other—not responding to other patrol calls. They're there specifically to do traffic enforcement at the area and for the reason that has been outlined. In the past, that was at about—it—it varied from year to year, but 21% to 28% were step stops. But for the—for the last two years, it's been closer to 30—39%. And there is a different disparity ratio for step and non-step. So I will caution you with—with Asian drivers and with Hispanic drivers because it's such a low end, and because now I'm taking 30% of—30 or 40% of those stops, and I'm breaking it out. Those are a—a very small change, and that can have a—a high effect on the—on the disparity ratio. So the—the ones that I would—I would draw your attention to would be the African-American and the Caucasian drivers. So we made the change in 2018 where we—I—I did a lot of mapping. I recruited some—some assistance with—trying to figure out, you know, what's the best time of day to be here and—and how—how does that work? But we, as a result of focusing the location of the step stops on areas that were accident-prone, areas that had accidents with injuries, the—the step disparity ratio decreased to 0.85%. So an African-American driver is now 15% less likely than we would expect based on our estimated driving population to be stopped in a step detail compared to the previous year, 40% more likely than we would expect. So this change in—in step location made a large difference in the—in the step disparity ratio. The non-step disparity ratio, these are stops that officers make while they're patrolling. And so that has always looked different than the—than the step disparity ratio. Step disparity ratios are—are—it's a patrol versus non-patrol. So a Caucasian driver is 13% less likely than we would expect to be stopped during a non-step stop. And an African-American driver this past year was 60% more likely than we would expect based on the estimated driving population based on random police patrol to be stopped. So those two numbers together, the—the non-step is weighted higher and the step is weighted lower because of the—the percentage of stops that are step and non-step. So together, that comes to the overall disparity ratio of 1.35. But it's helpful to break it out. So looking at the outcomes of the stop, so things that happen after we make the stop. We're now shifting because now we know the population of the stopped drivers. We're not guessing at the denominator. We know the denominator. We know—I know what race has been indicated on all the tickets. So this is no longer a proxy. This is no longer—there's no longer a question mark. These are the decisions that are made after the stop has been initiated. There's not—there's not a big difference in the—in the time between citation warning and something that's more serious than a traffic violation across races by more than a couple of minutes. more serious than a traffic violation across races by more than a couple of minutes. For the outcome of traffic stops, the outer ring is 2018, the inner ring is the five-year average. Most of the time, if you're stopped in Urbana, you're going to get a citation. About 40% of the time, 42% to 44%, it will end in, the most serious outcome will be a warning. And then in 3% of cases last year, but 5% of cases in the past five years ended in something more serious than a traffic violation. Those are things such as driving under the influence, things as driving under revoked license, things that are more serious than a simple, you know, traffic violation. And then I have the Z scores up here too, just as kind of a, has this changed significantly over the last five years? So the ticket rate has decreased by about a half a standard deviation, so that's not something to really pay attention to. The warning has increased by 1.03, so it's, you know, it's there, but it's not greatly. And then more serious than a traffic violation has decreased by one and a half standard deviations, so that's a notable decrease. So for the disparity ratio of the outcome, we take the percentage of drivers that are stopped of each race divided by the, so of the citations. So if we stop, 30% of our drivers are African-American, and we write a citation, how many of those citations are for African-American drivers? So this is a known entity on both sides, so these numbers have no guesswork. So after the traffic stop has been initiated, and after the driver knows the race, or after the officer knows the race of the driver, an African-American is actually less likely to receive a traffic citation. And that is a significant decrease from the five-year average. A Caucasian driver is now 6% more likely to receive a traffic citation, and that is a notable increase. And then a Caucasian driver is less likely to receive a warning, and that is a very notable decrease, because these numbers had been running so closely for such a long time, that even though it's only a decrease in a 4% range, that's a, it's big compared to what we had been, what the range had been in the past. An African-American driver now is more, is now 8% more likely to receive a warning than we would expect based on the stopped percentage of African-American drivers. And then for the more serious outcomes, an African-American driver is 107% more likely to have the traffic stop end in something more serious than a traffic violation. When I run through all of those, it's non-discretionary. It's not, it's not a decision that the officer has made one way or another. It's if there's a warrant, it's if there's driving under the influence, if it's driving under revoked. So those are things that, while it's there, overall, it was only, it was 122 stops, and those are, those are non-discretionary. And then looking at those things that are more serious than a traffic violation, it doesn't happen very often, and then those, any of those that do result in arrests, so we had 122 that were more serious than a traffic violation, and then we arrested 81 individuals that were involved in traffic stops that were more serious than a traffic So when we stop somebody, it's hard to know the reason for what the stop was, and then what happened after the stop. So we won't ever stop somebody for driving under revoked license, because we won't know that until after we make the stop. We don't stop people for warrants, we don't know that until after we make the stop. But this is just kind of a frequency table of those things that are more serious, what offenses are showing up on the police reports. So it's driving under revoked cannabis offenses, interstate warrants, driving under the influence of alcohol. So this is just kind of a descriptive, what's going on in things that are more serious. And then for the arrests from traffic stops, I did break it down by race as well. So we made the 81 arrests, and then 58% were African-Americans. So 48 African-Americans were arrested in conjunction with a traffic stop. That includes drivers and passengers in 2018. And that number has consistently been above 50% of all arrests from traffic stops end in, are of African-American drivers. But again, those are non-discretionary. Those are things that, if you're driving under a revoked license, if it is a DUI, if you do have a warrant, those are things that end up where somebody is totally arrested and taken to jail. We added the beyond-the-scope checkbox, so we could get a better, you know, whether the motivation is a targeted patrol or whether it comes after the stop, that's kind of a harder thing to measure. So we can, we can look at traffic stops that end in something that's beyond the scope of the original traffic stop. So these don't include things like DUIs, they don't include revoked driver's licenses, because those are all things that you would discover in the scope of a regular traffic stop. But if it's questioning beyond, if it's a consent search, if it's a dog sniff, if it's questioning beyond, beyond what ends, beyond a regular traffic stop, then officers will now note that on the ticket, and that gets entered into the computer. So it's a, it's a real low number. So 98, there's 98 in that, in this little bar here, and that includes 52 that were questioning only and did not include a dog sniff or a consent search. So we talked about a better way to measure that, and then we added that onto the ticket, and it's, 2.8% of all stops ended anything other than beyond the scope of a traffic stop, including dog sniff and consent searches and just questioning. Consent searches and dog sniffs, it's such a low percentage. It's, we did 23 consent searches in 2018, we did 24 canine sniffs in 2018 overall. It's a low percentage of all of the traffic stops that we do. Okay, so on to the geography of traffic stops. So the density of the non-step traffic stops, which is where we see the most disparity in the overall disparity ratio with African-American drivers, it's most evident at the level of non-step traffic stops. We can map it with the density as I showed before, where we'll, I can pull out just the stops of African-American drivers, and I can pull out just the non-step stops. And so it's, these are only 2018 stops, so it's a little bit, I'm taking a small number, and I'm making it smaller, and then I'm making it smaller again, but this is still, it's an instructive way to try and figure out. Okay, and so we can overlay that with citizen-initiated calls for service. So I'm taking out anything that is officer-initiated. So if an officer is driving and sees something and then makes a stop, and he's initiated, he or she has initiated that action themselves, that's not included in here. These are only incidents where a citizen has picked up the phone and dialed 911 and asked for police assistance. It's, it seems to be more of a function of geography. So the African-American non-step stops, the patrol stops are taking place in areas where we're getting more frequently, more frequent calls for service. And then I said that we'd circle back to the equipment violation stops. So we had an increase in the percentage of equipment violation stops because we started a new program in July.
Do you want to give, Preston? You available?
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
So where did you want to start?
If you just want to give an overview of the program, what it does and when it started.
Okay, so in July of 2018, we started a program called the Equipment Voucher Program, or Fix-It Ticket. The purpose of that program was to assist our citizens through, first off, education, because during that portion when they get stopped with their equipment violation, let's say it's a rear taillight passenger side, most drivers that we've had contact with didn't know that they can go to Advance and get this bulb in Advance will put it in for them. So that's the education piece on that. The assistance part is, once they get pulled over and they don't have any other violations at that time, let's say either warrant or a suspended or revoked driver's license or not DUI, then they would receive this voucher, be able to go to Advance and get that repaired, so they wouldn't have the repeat stops by either our jurisdiction or other jurisdictions in our area. We actually, so we started out just after the Fourth of July in 2018, and in July, we issued 82 vouchers during that time period. 52 of those vouchers were redeemed during that month. A few of them carried over to other months, but in August, we issued 20, redeemed 15. September, we issued 22, which as you can see, the numbers dropped drastically because the people didn't have the violations any longer, less people were out there. October, 26 were issued, 22 were redeemed. November, we was a 100%, 11 for 11 in the 11th month, you know, go figure. And in December, we issued 15 and redeemed 13. We had numbers earlier, but I don't have numbers in front of me.
So it, so this is, so there were several that we issued in December that potentially were redeemed in January, so, but even not including that without the lag, it's over a 75% redemption rate. It averages about $6 a fix, and so from July until December, the cost was $805. 176 vouchers issued were total, and then 133 were redeemed. And then we got lots of very positive comments.
Okay, after that, we ended up in, what was that?
We started in October.
We started in October with a survey, because we thought it'd be a good idea to see how the community felt about it. They didn't have to fill out the survey if they didn't want to, it wasn't a mandatory thing with the voucher. But some of the responses we received were, seemed to be a very kind and caring program. Thank you. I appreciate the officer informing me as well as giving me the voucher. Knowing that the city is willing to help instead of ticket right away builds confidence in the police. I love that they started this program. The officer was very friendly and approachable, which I found extremely relieving. So everybody who does the survey, they don't have to put in the comments section, but these people took the time to actually write out comments and leave with advance. So overall, you know, I believe it's a good, successful program, and people are benefiting from it. Are there any questions? Yes, ma'am, Hurs.
I was just going to ask, on a whole, and it's nice that you got these comments, but also regarding the survey on the whole, what was, what were the results? Were they all like, really, really good, somewhat good, very strongly good, you know?
Well, we asked questions on the survey, like, did you know about the violation or the equipment outage prior to being stopped? And everybody except for a couple said, no, they did not know. We asked, did this help you decide to go get it repaired? Everybody said yes. And do you think this program should continue? Everybody says yes, that's filled out the survey.
Okay. Mary Alice?
Yes.
So how did you deliver the survey? Do you give them like a coupon to go to one of the stores, and then on the back, it has a survey? How did you distribute that?
Okay, so when the officer stops them, they issue them a golden ticket, like a voucher. Well, it is a voucher, but it's like a big golden ticket. On that voucher, it advises them where they go to get the item, the light bulb, and then once they get to Advance, Advance offers them the voucher there, because they have, we gave them a stack of the vouchers.
The surveys.
The surveys. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. The surveys to...
Oh, so the surveys are there for people when they redeem it?
Correct.
Okay, all right. I have one more question, is that okay, Bill?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, okay, what can they get a voucher for? They can get one for a light bulb, I guess an indicator or a headlight. Is there any other equipment violation that...
So they can get them for headlights, as long as it's not, you know, damaged to the point to where, like they hit a pole. Blinker light, both front and back turn signal lights, taillight bulbs, not the actual framework of the lights, and the tag lights.
So lots of lights. You got a light, if you light it, you got a light out, all the light bulbs, okay, all right, thank you.
And there's a dollar limit too, right? It can't exceed...
Yes. So generally, we've had a few that were like 26, but the cap is 25, but a majority of them are like 86 cents and a dollar two. So it makes up for it to be able to get the higher-end $26 ones.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor?
Just a reminder, when we started the program, we set aside $2,500 for this, and it was taken out of the existing budget, so there wasn't an extra amount of money. And it looks like we'll have left over for next year as well, so it's, thank you.
The way it's going.
I had a question, if, so the numbers went up for equipment violations, is that right?
Yeah, they did.
So they just weren't, they would have ignored it before, and now they can give out a coupon, so they're like, oh yeah, I can give this guy a coupon if I stop him.
I'm not, I'm not able to say for sure. I know that we gave, our equipment violation numbers went up, we gave out 170, 176 vouchers. That's only the vouchers that we gave out. So we could have initiated stops with the intention to give out the voucher, and then it ended up it was something more serious than simply, than simply the equipment violation. So it's at least 100, it went up by at least 176, but maybe more than that.
Okay. Any other questions?
And the equipment violation stop isn't just initiated for lights that are out, like faulty lights. It could be that your headlights are not turned on, and that's something different. So it's not all of the equipment violations.
It still falls under the same check in the citation or warning.
Dennis?
I'm just going to say that when you have a program that elicits positive comments from the public for the help and assistance that they're being offered when they get a stop, which is usually a kind of considered a negative experience, that we're doing something right, and this is really a good program.
Thank you.
Mary Alice?
So when do we get to ask about the bigger report?
Let me do the summary, and then...
Okay, all right. I'm holding on.
All right, I can get out to you.
The other equipment violation.
Nothing, all right.
Okay, so as a summary, we had an increase in the overall traffic stops, but it was not outside of what we would expect based on the past five years. We had an increase in the percentage of step stops over the last two years, which was quite a bit more than the previous five years. We had an increase in our overall disparity ratio. So this year, 30% of our stops are with African-American drivers. We're going to estimate that African-American drivers make up 22% of the Urbana driving population. So the overall disparity ratio was 1.35, meaning an African-American driver was 35% more likely than we would expect based on the driving population based on random patrol to be stopped in Urbana. So it's a decrease from 1.45 overall in 2017. The non-step disparity ratio is higher, and it seems to be correlated geographically with citizen-initiated calls for service. At the decision point of the outcome of the stop, African-American drivers are less likely to receive a citation and more likely to receive a warning. And then we highlighted the successful new fix-it voucher program. Do you want to, are you closing?
Well, I think what I'd like to do is open it up to some questions now, or do we need to back it up to any slides maybe that we kind of went through? I think there was, there was one that I kind of wanted to make sure that we, would you, slide 25. And I think that's the one that shows sort of this overlay, this geographic correlation between where the officers are and then where they, where they've been called, and where they spend a lot of time because they're called there. And so I just wanted, I wanted to point that out, if indeed, when we can, we point them and say, "Go here," and "Go there," like we do in the step thing, the step program, we're able to have a little more control over how the numbers work out. So I just wanted to, as I watched the mayor and Charisse try to zone in over there, so I just wanted to make sure that that was highlighted, and I know that Mary... so I just wanted to make sure that that, that was highlighted, and I know that Mary Ellis has some questions, so.
Mary Ellis, you want to start?
Sure, I'll start. No, I have, I have, I won't ask all of them at once, I promise. So my first question, I'm really happy that you brought this up because it is question number one. Is there a way to overlay this, again, I understand that we have multiple overlays, with the hotspot analysis for where Caucasians are being stopped? Is it the exact same pattern, or is it different? For the non-step stops?
For the non, I, I believe it's different, I don't have that handy here, but that's a, it's, it's something that I have.
I think it would be useful for us to be able, if we're talking about, I, I think that Daryl was alluding to overpolicing of certain neighborhoods, if, if I'm, I'm looking at him back there, he can nod his head or not. If that's the case, then these are the calls for service. If the, if Caucasians are being stopped in the exact same locations, you would assume that, that we would have, right, no disparity because they're all, they're all getting to be at the same location. So I think that that might illuminate for us whether or not we're, we're policing in different areas, or if we're going to areas which the calls are. That would be helpful, I think. My second is just kind of a question, a clarifying question. We had talked in the past on why we use accident level data in terms of the denominator. If I remember correctly, there was some conversation about how fifty percent, roughly fifty percent of the drivers are not, you, not Urbana residents, is that correct?
Yeah, half of, half of the drivers that we stop in Urbana do not live in Urbana. We've got, I mean, you all know, we've got the, the hospitals, and we've got the university, and we've got students, and it's just, it's a, using the census population for a proxy of drivers in Urbana is, is not the best choice. And to, and to try and do any kind of-
No, I just wanted to clarify that it was fifty percent, because I think that that, okay, all right. And then, uh, in the more serious stops, can you go back to that for a second? There was, um, more serious stops in terms of why, the reasons, or sorry, the outcomes, so to speak. I think it's, I should have written down the table, maybe-
That's okay.
Yes, here we go. So operate uninsured motor vehicle. I have been, uh, occasionally, I've only been stopped once in the past ten years, and it was because license registration was expired, and then I also didn't have my insurance card on me, okay? So I had insurance, I was able to show insurance card, but what is that twelve point six percent? Does that mean that people who don't physically have it on them at that time?
It's, yeah, it's anything that's written on, um, but, so that's, that's not the reason for the stop, though, that's-
Sure.
And that's not the reason that it's elevated to something more serious than the stop, that's in conjunction with anything on the bottom.
Oh, I see, so the more serious is the bottom.
With regards to uninsured motor vehicle, we, we issue a lot of those tickets, somebody can't show it at the time, the law requires you're able to prove it now. Since my day of making traffic stops, now everybody holds on a second, and they pull up their phone, and there's something, and they're showing me a GEICO, or not me, but the guys and gals, you know, other, other ways of doing that. I think traditionally now, usually what would happen is we then put the impetus on the driver, if they don't have that proof at the time, they can then later go in, go through the court process, make that showing, and then there's no conviction on that ticket, the ticket would be dismissed then. But I think all of your data has nothing to do with sort of convictions, but it has to do with what the tickets were written for.
Right. And I don't have access to-
All right, but that, that isn't counted, because I think we were looking at the percentage of people that resulted in more serious offenses, but not having your insurance card at the time of the stop does not put you in that category of more serious. Just the bottom part, okay.
And this is a, it's not a perfect measure, too, so if, if you're driving and your friend is in the passenger seat and your friend has a warrant, that's gonna be now something that's more serious than the traffic violation, and it has nothing to do with, with you as the driver. So there, there are all kinds of different things that go into this, but this is just a, a count of the offenses that are listed on the police reports that started as a, a normal traffic stop.
All right, thank you, I'll hold off and let other people have questions, thank you.
Just, okay, Sharice?
I think the question that I had, there's one, a couple of questions. I, I didn't understand what normal range was while I was trying to read this, I didn't really get the definition of what nor, there's a normalcy for traffic stops, or?
There's, there's never gonna, well, so if we did a thousand traffic stops every single year for five years, and then this year we did twelve hundred stops, that's a, that's outside of the range that we would expect because our sta- like, we've never varied in the number of traffic stops.
So range is like a median, or the average, or?
It is the average for Urbana, so it's, it's specific for us, it's not just the normal range of, of any police department, it's specific based on what we've done in the past. So we can expect to see variation in our traffic stops, and we've seen variation in our traffic stops in the past because of staffing levels, because of all kinds of things.
And, and just so that you know as well, and though I did take Social One Eighty-Five a million years ago, um, and my social statistics, I do some, okay, Z-score, Google, ah, that's right, the bell curve, and how the data lays out, and so that's, that's what she's referring to, so.
Okay, 'cause that, that was something that, the other, the other questions I, another question I had is the dog sniff question.
Yes.
When, um, when a person's car is sniffed, what is your probable cause for bringing in a dog for a sniff?
So the, technically, the Supreme Court doesn't require probable cause to sniff a car. A free air sniff, um, is not considered a search by the Supreme Court as long as the tr- the traffic stop is not protracted or extended. So if I have to call a dog, and it comes from the northern end of the county, and we have to hold the person, then that would be a violation. But if the dog is in town, and during the course of the eleven to fourteen minute stop, the dog can be brought, there isn't, for the law, a need to have probable cause. The dog actually does the sniff, and it sits down, and it indicates, that's then the probable cause then to search the vehicle. Urbana requires we provide, we need to have some sort of reason, the officers have to, why did you call a dog? And that's because, well, it, this, and it could be a variety of different issues, but that's when there needs to be some sort of reason the officer has to give as to why they then called the dog. So in-house, our standard is a little more restrictive on the officers, give me some reason as to why you decided to call for a dog. That's a separate analysis than what the law requires.
Okay, so my, so that, when, I guess what I want to know is when a dog is called in to take a sniff, is this, um, is it lawful to do it when, uh, is it something that would be done as a targeted stop, is some, or would it, if they, if a policeman stops you because your blinker isn't, isn't working, and he doesn't smell cannabis in the car, or he, you know, that's, I guess that's why, why would a dog be required? You know, the person is driving weird or some, I, I don't know how, how you determine that, oh, we, we need dog come take a sniff.
I think traditionally, that might be things like history with the driver, or perhaps we, where we've gotten complaints that at a certain house, um, there's drug dealing going on, and so then the officers could say, ah, this person goes up, he stays for a short amount of time and drives away, this person walks up, goes to the back, they see what looks appear to be a hand-to-hand exchange, and then the car would drive away. Those would be the kinds of things, ah, we saw, we, we see some kind of reason, and then we would call for the dog.
So it's more of a targeted, a targeted stop?
I, I believe that'd be correct, although I don't know, again, the number, I don't know if I could, would swear to that, depending on how small those numbers are on this one here. But yes, I would, I don't know if you have any further to add on?
Um, so with the, with the beyond scope box, I can tell a little bit more, and I don't have the, the whole list of the, the reasons for that, but, um, yeah, some of it was, I believe, because people were leaving areas of, of high drug, um, drug knowledge, and then committed a traffic violation, and then this was happening. But a lot of times, it's, it's after the stop is initiated, and it's a scent, um, and it's, those are usually things that are just destroyed at the scene, um, so it's not, it's not even anything that gets, gets taken further than that.
So you, you're saying it's after, after the stop, they got stopped because they rolled through a stop sign, and they get, and then the policeman smells something, and then they bring the dog in, is that what you?
Um, and sometimes, or sometimes it's just a visible, um, it's not, it's not a question that I'm able to answer with authority right now, but I can follow up with you later.
Okay, and also, can I get a, um, a copy of this PowerPoint?
Yeah, it'll be posted.
That's got the maps and, and overlays, and it, it just explains, I mean, not that this wasn't informative, but with that included, it's just, it is a lot more kind of easy for me to follow.
Yeah, it'll be posted to the city website tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Dennis?
Yeah, I wanted, thank you, Sharice, for, for bringing the dog sniff question up, because I was sort of wondering how that operated, too, so. So a drug sniff couldn't, I mean, a dog sniff cannot be initiated unless there was a traffic violation or an equipment failure on the car? I guess what I'm wondering-
Yeah, we'd have to get the car stopped first, yes, correct.
All right, so, so we're not using just suspicion to stop a vehicle to find out if the suspicion is warranted?
If I, um-
Say, okay.
So let, let me use a different example, let's stay away from, let's stay away from uh, drugs, for, for example.
But how can you? I mean, it seems like-
Hold on, just, give me just a sec. Bank robbery occurs, red Mustang seen as, is the getaway car, okay? There's, we don't, we, we see the car driving there, it, it's leaving the, the area of the bank, it's got two guys in it, just like, uh, that, one of them's still got a ski mask on, it's not, might not be breaking any traffic laws, okay? That, right there, those, those facts, and that would be what would be called reasonable suspicion, and the police officer could indeed stop that particular, um, car. So you can stop it without, if you will, a traffic violation now. Most bank robbers are probably not going to be following all the, the vehicle code. So that's, I guess, I wanted to make sure that was clear, that you can indeed have a re, you can stop a car without having the, um, without having a violation of, of the vehicle code. I, I also, so they had twenty-four-
But you wouldn't call a dog to sniff a bank robbery car?
Co- correct, that's correct.
So we're talking about the dog sniff, and so I guess I'm, I'm somewhat concerned, although I understand the premise, that, you know, if you're, have been watching a house and you suspect things are going on, and then you decide to stop cars that leave the house, and if you don't see anything that is like a, an open bag of some substance that might be questionable, and there hasn't been a traffic violation yet, and yet you might want to bring a dog sniff to make, to just sort of nail it down whether there's gonna be this suspected quantity of illegal whatever in the car? Could that happen?
Could that, I, I guess I'll have you rephrase your, summarize your, your scenario here a, a, again, for me real fast. I, I guess what I will say is that it's, it's, and I don't know exactly where these twenty-four, and I guess I should start with that. Of our thirty-six hundred traffic stops last year, there were only twenty-four sniffs, which is a extremely low, low number. So I want to make sure that I set the context for what exactly it is that was, we're talking about.
But it matters to this starfish.
Understood. So with regards to the, um, the traffic stop scenario, if indeed, we had, I knew that suspect X, we had multiple contacts with as, as was involved in narcotics, and he went to a house, and that we knew had, it, we'd gotten multiple pieces of information, and he drove away from that particular stop, and we ultimately decided to make that stop without an Illinois vehicle code violation.
IBC, only IBC, yeah.
Right.
So that would be, that wouldn't necessarily be part of this particular study, that scenario that I just laid out, because there has to be a violation of the vehicle code. Now, take that scenario that I just laid out, and then they rolled through a stop sign. So the officer stopped them for, sir, you, that you, you rolled to the stop sign back there, unfortunately, I do need to write a ticket tonight, I need to see your driver's license and insurance, and in that particular case, then while writing the stop ticket, if the canine is two blocks over, the do, we, then the officer would be free then to, as long as he didn't protract or extend that stop, have the dog come, and then the dog could, could, um, walk the car in that case.
Does the driver have to concur and allow the sniff, or does he have any, I mean, is it, it doesn't have to be a-
It's not, it's not an issue of consent, no.
Consent issue, yes. All right, well, I mean, I can see how law enforcement uses that to apprehend drug smuggling or whatever, or drug sales, but it also, it does seem to bring into question, I guess, due process up until the point, because there's, you don't have any proof, but you have a some, you're suspicious, and you may or may not, um, have really good grounds to make the stop.
Well, and I think that's why, and again, I, I at least will say this with regards to canine sniffs, that in Urbana, that we'd require the officers to, and this was in chiefs before me, that required the officers to indeed have some sort of reason and not just, hey, the dog is nearby, let's run it. Supreme Court says that, but Urbana has at least set a more str- stringent policy on that to, I think, sort of control what you're, what you're going for.
It's a concern, you know, it's a concern. I lived in front of a guy who was suspected of drug dealing when I lived in, in Phoenix, and anytime, almost every time I pulled out of my driveway, I was stopped by the police, and they didn't want to know what I was doing, they were wondering about my neighbor. I mean, you know, so, I mean, I'm a little sensitive about this, all right? Thank you.
I have a question on dogs, as long as we're on dogs. Looks like they alerted nineteen out of twenty times, basically, ninety-five percent of the time, um, and the contraband was found roughly two-thirds of the time, both they, both for African-Americans and Caucasians, which is a little bit different than state police, um, state police have a worse success rate with African-Americans, so that's encouraging that at least the success rate is roughly the same. I guess my question is, all that shows me is either the dogs, right, two-thirds of the time, or the officer is, because the officer's calling the dogs out, and, and they're both, right, basically, two-thirds of the time. Have you ever taken the dogs just like over to the cars in the parking lot here, the police vehicles or other employees, and see how many times they alert there?
So I, I will tell you that I was never a canine handler, but there's a rather stringent policy and an annual sort of process where they go to get recertified, and they do just that, they have different boxes and containers, and so they do put empty suitcases out, and does the dog hit on everything? As a matter of fact, those ones where the dog hits and we don't find anything are also things that we, we try, we, we try to look at, and you can speak better, sometimes there's just very small residual amounts, sometimes the, the passengers might say, oh, yeah, but we, we had some earlier, but we smoked it earlier, we don't have anything in here, and so there's, there is a, the dog actually keeps, there's like a journal entry, a diary of sorts, if you will, for every sniff and what they find and, and don't find, and, and so, yes, it's, absolutely, that's done, although we don't necessarily do it informally in our parking lot with the squad cars.
Okay, just side check.
And it's not sausages that happen to be coming from the grocery store.
Any, okay, any questions not dog related?
I have a dog question.
Another dog question from Mary Ellis.
You could have asked most of it, but I just, in the past, we've had a table, and I, I just wanted to ask if this is the same table with the dogs, in which people who were, I believe, searched, that the hit rate was disproportionate for Caucasians, there was a higher ri- hit rate than there were for African-Americans. Was it with the dog sniffs?
Um, no, it's with the consent searches, and that one, if it's not in the-
I didn't see it in here.
Um, I think that I may have taken it out because it's such a low number, and to take, like, to take ten consent searches that we did in twenty sixteen, like, if we were right on one more or one fewer than we were the, the ten that we had done in, in twenty fifteen, so the, the numbers are available, they're all on the, on the open data portal, but it's, it's such a low number that to try and do any kind of hit rate with, with one year or even a couple of years is problematic.
Okay. Eric?
So I'm thinking about the denominator-
Yes.
-in your ratios, and it seems to me that the accident rates are a very good denominator for the step stops, because the step stops are targeting areas where there are a lot of accidents, so that makes perfectly good sense. But it seems to me that for the non-steps stops, that, that, that there'll be a strong influence on the correct denominator by who is living in the neighborhood where those are taking place, that the citywide accident rate may not be the right denominator for non-step stops. Does, uh, if, does, does that, I guess the question, I guess the question is, does that reasoning make sense to you?
It does, and I can, so for the non-step stops, it's more likely to be a resident of Urbana than, than a step stop, because step stops are, are now mainly on, on some of the main, high trafficked roads, and then the non-step stops, when we're looking at the map, appear- And then the non-step stops, when we're looking at the map, appear to be a bit more residential. I can overlay that with, with census data, but what we can also do is use the demographics of the individuals that are on police reports. And so, when we're looking at, at forty percent of our victims in police reports are African American, police reports are taken in areas where we have high calls for service. That may be something that, I don't know how to mathematically adjust for that, but it at least lends some context.
Yeah. I, I'll just make a comment that I think it does make sense to patrol more intensively in areas where there are more calls for service. I, I don't, I guess, I, back when I was on the, the commission that studied these things, I looked into the literature as hard as I could about the relationship between crime rates, intensity of patrolling. And it did seem, it seemed as though there were good statistics that said that more intense patrols, you know, that what you think by common sense actually is true, that more intense patrols do reduce crime rate. Because there were a couple of times when people did experiments and, and didn't patrol more intensively, and sure enough, you know, things got bad. So, so I would, you know, I think that, I think that your, your patterns, to me, to me, your patterns are possibly completely consistent with unbiased patterns of both patrol and reacting to situations. And I wouldn't have said that in any previous year, because they weren't. But, but I, I'm, I'm really pretty encouraged about, about where we've gotten to.
Jared?
Chief Seraphin, I guess my, did you get a chance to read Durrell's, I think he sent to everybody?
The, the word, the word document, yes, sir.
Yeah, the word document.
Yes, I did read that.
So I guess my biggest question for you, I think, after all these times, we figured out that Melissa's not here to give us answers, just to answer questions about her statistics.
Right.
So, I guess the, the question then falls to you, and what are your takeaways from this? And with specific regard to what Durrell mentioned in targeting the ratio and non-step stops and reducing that ratio?
So, I do have thoughts-
Thoughts on that?
Thoughts and takeaways. I, I, I'll start with that, I, I am not sure that in the non-step, we will ever achieve a perfect one point zero. So, I, I just, I, I don't know that that's necess, I, I think we need to continue to work and we continue to educate, but I don't know that that's necessarily where we ultimately will, will wind up. I think that geography and overlaying those stops with that calls for service clearly shows, to me at least, that we're in the right, there's a correlation. I am not an expert in the literature, but with regards to this, the theory of exposure when the officers are in particular areas and spending more time there. Locally, and anyone, especially in the last handful of years, we've dealt with this, the shooting violence in our community. And I think when it comes to those issues, this is part of that, the officers are going to be where we've had some of these issues. It, forty percent of the victims in our police reports are African American. And so I think that's part of the discussion here, to, to know that this is, I, I don't, theoretically, we could take all of the policemen, we could give them direction to patrol in only the Caucasian areas, and I could make your number go all the way to the basement and beyond. But that's not, that's, I don't think that's fair policing, and I don't think that's, that's what we, I don't, that's not what we want the officers from Urbana Police to do. And we want them to, we want them to monitor the behavior, act on behavior. There was a, I was having some discussion regarding the denominator, which seems to be an interesting talking point here. And there are different ways to do it, whether we tried to count every driver that was on the streets, or whether we had clickers that we were trying to determine how many, you count this at different times, and how we tried to move everyone around, and we could try to count all of those. And, and one of the things they found that it, well, especially after dark, it was hard. Even the researchers go, we can't tell you who's driving. And so that sort of speaks to the point, is that the officers, we want them to be where the crime is occurring, and I want them to act on behaviors that they witness. The, I guess, Durrell had discussed what some of our, our, what are we going to do to move forward? One of the things that we'll do is we continue to, every year we do again more of our implicit bias training, and so we do, we do cover that, that every year, to make people aware, to make the officers aware. And I've had some interesting moments where officers have had, had a little cathartic moment to make sure that we are all, the guys are, and, and the ladies are aware. We continue to go for roll-call training, so we do something similar, where we try to make sure that the officers understand, what is the, how do we calculate the ratio? What is the disparity ratio? Why are people asking about it? Do you understand, officers, the impact that you have? And, and they do, and I, and I support them, I don't, never going to say that we're all perfect. But I do believe they, they do a good job, and again, are, we are focusing on that behavior in those areas where we're called.
Okay, so, our, our primary focus, from what I'm gathering from that, is implicit bias training.
That's part of it, yes, sir.
That's part of it, and training the officers on their impact based on these reports we've been getting.
Education of the officers, correct, sir.
But, doesn't sound like we're considering or exercising any ideas as far as practices are concerned, teaching about what an officer thinks about when he leaves the basement and walks out to their patrol vehicle and hits the streets. Where, go ahead.
I think that's part of both of those two prior trainings.
Okay.
Um, I think that some of, that, that is material that is covered in there, that we, we do have that, so that they do think about that. That's part of why we're having, when we do the, you know, the roll-call trainings, wanted to make sure that they do. Now, with regards to whether or not we, we cannot, we're going to dictate specifically where you're at for your patrol shift. Because again, remember, that's the difference between the step and the non-step. That patrol shift is much more organic and, and if you will, reactionary to the issues of the day. Hey, we just had a shooting over here, we're going to spend, spend some more time over there, guys. And, so those, so that is, again, I want to make sure that that's, that is, that that's clear, the difference between that step and that, and that non-step. When we have total control, we can move and, 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 and I would try to put them everywhere just for the sake of getting the perfect one point zero. But I don't believe that's effective in policing the entire community.
I, I, I would agree that I don't either, and that's not, I, I don't think, the, the realistic expectation, the expectation is for equity, whatever it is. We all understand we live in an imperfect world.
Correct.
And perfection is not probably something that will ever be achieved by any police department in, in the United States or anywhere in the world. I guess, Melissa, where I'm going with this is I'm thinking about overpolicing, and I'm thinking about not having the same impact in the same communities. And I'm curious, I know this is gonna, you know, we have a very specific thing we're doing with traffic, and this is going to deviate a little bit from that idea, but perhaps the statistics can come aligned in, in some way for you. So here's my, here's my idea, is I'm thinking about frequency. I'm thinking about frequency in the terms of looking at this citizen-initiated calls, calls for service and non-step stops. And I'm thinking about, how do we track frequency of time spent in these areas by officers? So, I haven't been on as many ride-alongs as I'd like to, but I have spent time talking to a lot of the guys, and the number one question I would, I would ask was, why are you going here? You know, why, why when we exited the building and you took a right and you headed towards this apartment complex, why are we going there? And, most of the time, it seems like when we were there, there wasn't anything going on. Sometimes we did end up on a call, but other times, the officers are just rolling around. They're just rolling around up and down the streets, just going from, from place to place to place. And if you statistically find yourself in a certain part of town with a certain community of people, you're going to, just by nature, end up stopping more people in that part of town, because you're spending more time there. Now, I understand that that is, in fact, part of what this, you know, what the overlay is and what you're getting at with, this is where the officers are going. But if the frequency at which they are spending that time there is not, if we can't correlate that to crime prevention in, in some other way, then we're looking at overpolicing. Then we're looking at, you're just going there for reasons that we may not, that may not be appropriate for giving equitable policing across the community. Do you see where I'm going with this, Melissa? I don't know how to turn that into statistics, and I'm not asking you to, maybe that's not, you know, I know you've got another big project coming up that's, that's going to take up your time, but this is something that we have to think about, even with that community policing grant in that study, is, you know, if we're, if the frequency does not represent what the reasons for being there, then that's where I feel like maybe we can come into that, into that problem. Because if you're in those places, it is absolutely inherent that you're going to stop more people. And, okay, I, you got a thought on that?
With the data that I have now, it is not something that I can do. It's possible that it may be something that can be done at a later time with some of the, the new software, with the, with the new car software, maybe. Haven't messed around with it at all, and it's a brand-new system, and I'm not even really sure what that would look like. I understand your question, though, and that may be, may be something that I, I could be able to, to consider trying to do.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I don't even know what the data looks like.
Sure, sure, I know, we're just broaching it, I'm just planting that seed is, you know, how do, how do we solve, how do we move forward? How would you solve the issue, just besides retraining and continued training with officers to, to make significant changes?
I will add one other thing that I have met, is the eight months I've been the interim chief, lots of chiefs from other cities, and I will tell you that no one studies this like Urbana does. So just for the record, I just thought that needed to be said.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dean?
So I've heard the term overpolicing multiple times tonight, but I haven't heard anybody yet say no-go zone. And that's what you get when you start looking at numbers and you start pulling police out of high-volume call areas. And you start trying to play with math, you end up with a, with a no-go zone, and you can see it in history many, many, many times. They say, history repeats itself, look at any of the big cities where they did stuff like this. You end up with a no-go zone where it becomes too dangerous for the police to go in, because this was the thinking, and you can't prove a negative. You can't prove the fight of the shooting that didn't happen because that veteran officer was driving in an area of town where he or she knew that it was beneficial to drive in. So, that's why I believe this can't be solved with math. It's, it's a social problem, and I think we're chasing our tails with math. And, no offense to you, Melissa, I just don't think you can solve a social problem with math. The other thing is, Bryant briefly mentioned, what the heck did he mention? Oh, the, the scope of the traffic stops, he briefly mentioned that, and I think it's important to draw a little more attention to that. A police officer cannot pull you over for a taillight being out, or whatever equipment violation or traffic violation, and make you sit there for four minutes while they call a canine from over, across town, or from U of I, or Champaign, or something like that. And that's important for people to know. If that canine can't get there by the time they finish their warning or their citation, then they have to cut you loose. So, I just think that's an important part of that equation, so thanks for listening.
Anyone else, Cerise?
I agree with Dean when he says you can't, you can't solve a social problem with math, because if you could, it would have been done already. But I am going to, and Bryant and I have talked about this before, about something that, for you to consider is having more people ride bikes, walk through neighborhoods, let the community get to know who's there, and let the community know how, how things work, which is, and, which is quite important. Because a, as a schoolteacher, I, I remember oftentimes the look would do enough without me having to ever take away recess, or give detention, or do anything harsher, because my kids knew me. And if your community knows you, if the community you're policing knows you, if they recognize you, instead of you, you know, being, instead of there being some kind of a reprimand when you, when you roll through and you drive through, you know, you're liable to get stopped and somebody give you some cookies, or I made you some tea, and oh, it's a hot day, here you go. But you have to make yourself available to be known. You can't just, you know, I don't, I, I, I want you to respond when there's a problem, I want there to be a response. But I also want the community to know you so that every time that you show up to respond, it's not a negative experience for anyone. That, I know doing this citizens' police training that I've been doing the past few weeks, I, I want, if, if they did something illegal, I don't want there to be a negative problem. I want a person to say, yeah, dude, I was wrong, you're right, here, gone, and, you know, I, I won't give you any trouble, I won't resist, I won't, I won't do, you know, I don't want to see anybody else die, I don't want to see anybody else get hurt on either side of, of that type of situation. So I think that, I really think that it's important for our officers to make themselves known so that the communities that they police actually know who they are, know their names, know how many kids they have, make it more of a, of a, and not, it doesn't have to be an adversarial situation all the time. I'm not saying it won't be, I'm saying it doesn't have to be. And the only way that, you know, the police, I think, can, can have more of a positive influence in a community and be able to get information about violent crime, you have to act like you care. If you, if you're just there to police, you, you know, that, that's not going to help. Acting like you care with different cultures means acting like you care. Not just showing up with the police call, but actually being there after the incident happens. Coming back to check, maybe, see how somebody's doing. That's all I say.
I understand, and you're really talking about non-enforcement contacts. There's like some fancy term I learned somewhere, but, you know, but it's not just enforcement contacts. We deal with so many people when it's an enforcement contact, when it's, hey, it's a, a, you know, it was a traffic stop, and the cops are out there, I got a ticket, ah, you know, I'm going to Facebook, and, and those kinds of things. And so, yeah, but it's, it's those non-enforcement contacts are important. We are better at that when the weather turns.
Mm-hmm.
Because it does, as a matter of fact, the, the bikes were missing the other day from their normal winter storage spot in the stairwell, I was like, oh, good. So either A, they're getting fixed and repaired and ready to go for the, for the summer months, or B, somebody's outriding them.
Okay.
And, and so those are the kinds of things, yes, and that's why Neighborhood Nights and a lot of these other programs are, are important. That's why things like having static beat assignments, where that officer's in that beat all the time, and they actually become very possessive of their beats.
Okay.
Back when I started in ninety-four, Monday you were in this beat, Tuesday of your work week was that way, and you just rotated them through. Now you go and you stay there for, for six months. And people will stay there longer than that, because they know shopkeeper so-and-so, or Mrs. McGillicuddy on the corner, and they, you know, they can wave and, and those kinds of things. So, we're aware of that, and I, I appreciate your comments.
Okay.
Eric? So, I'm just going to, I agree with Dean about a lot of things, but I'm going to defend math a little bit. I, I, I'm not going to say that you can solve social problems with math, but you can sure help to identify them. And, and I do believe that the dialogue and the care with which we've examined these things and analyzed them over the last several years has, in fact, put us in a better place now than we were three, four, five years ago. I really believe- I really believe that, I believe that, I mean, I've always believed that we had really excellent policing in Urbana, but I believe we have better policing now than we would have had we not gone through this process. And, but I wanted to ask one more thing. Melissa, probably you're way ahead of me in thinking about this, but possible to actually do some broad representative or even comprehensive GPS tracking of where the police go and overlay that on the call-for-service map?
We just got the new software, the new, the new
Okay.
in-car camera, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So we don't have--
And I've seen, like, the pilot of it, and I've seen, like, the interface, but I don't know what the extraction looks like. I don't know what the compatibility looks like with my existing mapping software. I haven't had anything other than a, "Hey, that's kinda cool. I wonder if I could do something with that moment."
Because I think that would go a long way towards figuring out, although, I mean, maybe we have to put them on the bicycles, too, but beyond that, that would go a long way to addressing the issue that Jared raised about overpolicing. Because if we see that the, you know, that the density of police presence maps with the density of the need for police to be there, verified by calls for service, then that will, I think, tell us a lot. Okay. Jared?
I just wanted to add one word. I know we still have one more report from you, Bill, so if we keep it brief. Therese, I'd also encourage yourself, folks in your ward, people in the city of Urbana, to approach the Police Department of Urbana, to go for ride-alongs, to engage with them, to get to know them. Folks have been extremely accessible to me, hopefully not just because I'm a council member, but because I'm a citizen, and I live here as well. And I know that, you know, all you gotta do is schedule a ride, and go, go ride along with somebody, get to know them, see what they do every day. I think they're doing a, the folks who are working there are tremendous, and they're doing an extraordinarily hard job. And I know that, at the same time, with great power comes great responsibility. So there is, there is also, I'm not trying to get, let them off the hook either. They should be out there doing exactly as you say. Hopefully we'll be able to engage in some more practices to get people on the streets, talking to citizens. I think this study is gonna help us do some experimentation with that and see how that goes. But I just want people to know, the Police Department is successful. They're more willing to talk to folks and get to know folks. I just want people to know that.
And Dean?
One last thing. Sorry about that noise. I was actually looking at this thing called the Freedom Application that's used in Decatur. And I know you're familiar with Decatur.
Yeah.
Let me stop one second. I was Spider-Man's uncle that said that crap, right? Responsibility with power thing? Yeah. Okay, all right. I gotta be Dean, sir. So I'm looking at this Freedom Application, and it's a GPS with every unit in Macon County that they can track.
Wow.
And it's an application that law enforcement down there has. So what was the answer to our local issue on that? Do we track anymore? Or do we track yet?
We do.
We have not.
But we, the capability, I believe, is, is available, and I don't know if it's, I'm not sure what the implementation process has been like, but--
Neither, neither am I.
Okay. Well, I'd be more than happy to show you this and just see if you like it. It's costing everybody, like, ten bucks a phone. Well, you don't have to have it on your phone, but, but it is a GPS of where all the units are. So, thank you. Freedom Application.
Okay, I think that's it for the questions. Thank you very much for the report.
Thanks.
Awesome agenda. There it is. Okay, next on the agenda is Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission 2018 Annual Report, and I'm going to do that with Craig. So Dennis, could you take the chair?
Sure.
Be happy to.
Are you gonna do our presentation?
Very good. So Craig Chenkweller and Bill Brown? Go ahead, as you will.
Okay, so on your desk or in your packet was this annual report that's required for the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission to produce every year. And I'll just go through quickly the PDF, and then I have a few slides and a PowerPoint. So this year, the composition of the, yeah, the composition of the committee is, was about the same. We, we hired one of our members, Lily Wilcox, so we had to replace her with another member, Morgan White. So Morgan's representing the University of Illinois. We have people representing the Park District, the School District, and then the rest are at large. We are really lucky to have Cynthia Hoyle, Transportation Planner and Consultant with a lot of planning experience. Leonardo Covis is Champaign County Bikes Chair. So we have a lot of people, and Audrey issues the School District. So we have people from all different parts of the community with different expertise. BPAC, let me see if I can make this a little bit bigger. Where's the make it wider thing? Down there. There, that one. That's probably what it's looking for, there. Okay. This is established in 2006, and their main purpose was to analyze and propose bicycle routing, come up with the first bicycle master plan, which was started in 2006, is published in 2008, make recommendations on facilities, and do a lot of education and public outreach. So our first bicycle master plan was adopted in 2008. We received a bronze level bicycle-friendly community for that in 2010. And then we were upgraded to gold level in 2014, the first and only, and still only, gold level in the state of Illinois. And the latest bicycle master plan was approved by City Council in 2016. And then the League of American Bicyclists reevaluated it in 2018, and we maintained our gold level bicycle-friendly community status through 2022. And when they do that, they, they evaluate us on a lot of different, a lot of different, a lot of different things. Engineering, education, encouragement, enforcement, evaluation, and equity. So the things the city has the most control over really is the engineering and enforcement and evaluation. The education, encouragement, and equity is done mostly and very effectively by a lot of our community partners, like the bicycle groups and, and the schools. So just to go over some of the things that happened this year, the Country Club Road multi-use path just north of Cunningham Children's Home was completed. That was something that we contributed about half the cost to, I think, because they originally wanted to make it a, they were required to make it a four-foot wide path, and we contributed enough to be able to allow it to be a full multi-use path. So that will connect, make a good connection there along Country Club Road. There's county property to the west that it'll take some time to figure out how to handle that, but you can get onto it easy enough from this driveway access. The other big one was North Cunningham. You probably remember seeing that. That was IDOT project, and, and, but to do the, the side path, the city contributed $180,000, now the $800,000 budget. But that was a real important connection because people were walking under there all the time and walking on the highway or on the shoulder in the dark to get to, well, to make that connection. And it's also a really perfect place for a side path like that because there aren't many access drives where people might come out and block your way if you're riding your bicycle along there. Ongoing is IMCOR Project. Green Street still needs to be completed from Lincoln to Race Street. It'll happen next year, but we did finish the right-to-Lincoln section. And now parts of it are closed again because they're working on ISR, but a lot of people have really been pleased with the bicycle infrastructure and walkability and drivability of that, that new part. Couple of things underway. You probably saw up at Crystal Lake Park. They've started digging there. This is the corner. What will look, what it will look like after it's finished at Park and Broadway, looking kind of northwest. I have a slide of that. Let me see if I can. So that was before, this is just a Google image, Google Roads image, and then it's gonna look like that after. So you get, the Park Street connection will be really nice to, because there's bus stops here. The sidewalk on the south side of Park Street is, is broken. I don't think it's ADA either. There's curbs on that, so this will be all ADA compliant. And it is being funded mostly through the, through a grant, but Carl actually contributed a matching portion of that one, too. And that's being handled by the Park District. As far as planning goes, completed, RPC, Regional Planning Commission, completed the Weaver Park connectivity study, came up with, I forget, eight or 10 different options, and then had some public meetings and kind of prioritized which, which options would be best. There's nothing planned to be implemented at this point with that. We're still kind of waiting for the next study, which I'll get to in a minute. But also, yeah, but it was mostly to connect the Weaver Park as a trailhead for the Kikapu Railroad Trail, but there's two or three different options, and it'll kind of just depend on opportunities, which ones get implemented and win. We also have underway a bicycle wayfinding plan that RPC is doing, basically coming up with a sign design and places to put the signs where they're gonna direct people to destinations. It'll help, help brand Urbana destinations so that you know that it's in Urbana because they all have a familiar look to it. And the other big one that just got started last year is the Kikapu Railroad Feasibility Study to connect the existing, where it ends now at Main Street, to try to bring that farther into town or make connections from one place to another along there in between. But that, that's something that's been in the bike plan since the very beginning, since 2006, just to eventually get that railroad trail clear through. But as you remember, one of our top council goals last year was to expand the connectivity of Kikapu Railroad Trail with a focus between Vine Street and Lincoln Avenue. So Carl is, is funding $25,000 as a matching funds for the IDOT grant of $100,000 to do the feasibility study. And then also, we started two years, about a year and a half ago, we started with RPC, the pedestrian master plan, be similar to the bicycle plan. And so we established four pillars: accessibility and connectivity, equity, safety, and vibrancy. And within those, we have goals and, and some achievable goals within five to 10 years. I think 10 years was our timeframe on this one. So those are there for your reading pleasure. Vibrancy refers to, and I have a picture of it later, making it fun to, to walk and making, making it desirable to, to, you know, have, have destinations. And so you actually wanna, wanna go out and walk instead of getting in your car, basically. And there's a lot of different ways to do that, putting arts, art in public spaces, making, making it more interesting, making the whole walk way more interesting. Other things we discussed, the Brick Sidewalk Repair Project. These are some pictures I took last winter on Race Street, where you can see missing bricks. Even though people, it looks like they shoveled there, you wouldn't really wanna walk through there probably because there's mud and, and stuff like that. And then after they, this wasn't that same section, but an example down the street, a section that, after they'd repaired it, they bring, bring the brick level up, put in new sand and new, some new base if it's needed, and level it all out. And then it's very walkable, even in the snow there. We also talked about transportation affordability and sustainability, the speed limit reduction on Lincoln Avenue, the crossings that are gonna, are scheduled to be redone this summer, and that'll probably be coming to the City Council for a couple of things, too. The Retreat Development Shared Use Path, you might remember, we discussed that at council, too. The Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacon, that was a, a warning device. It was, it had a patent on it, and we weren't sure if we're gonna be able to keep using it. And it kind of, there was some discussion about how you'd replace that, but it turns out we're gonna be able to keep using it because they settled the patent dispute. And you may have also seen the new flashing signs on, on Lincoln Avenue that just flashed the eight hours during the day for pedestrian crossings in the new low-speed limit area. So those are the kind of things we, we discussed a little bit. Bike Box Education video. Oh, that was the MTD one, actually. I wanted to do the other one. Might not work here. Anyway, if you get home and wanna try that, you can see Kevin doing a little commercial. Oh, maybe it'll come up. A little how-to. Is that it? No, that's the other one. Okay. Maybe we can watch this one real quick.
Hi, I'm Kevin Garcia. On this edition of On Two Wheels, we're going to show you how to use two-stage left-turn boxes, like this one at Green Street and Goodwin Avenue in Urbana. Two-stage left-turn boxes provide an easy, safe way for people on bikes to make left turns on busier streets. There are painted green boxes on the pavement where you can wait, out of the path of traffic, to complete your left turn. To use the box, if you're riding a bike and wanna make a left turn, on a green light, you should go straight through the intersection and into the box. Turn your bike to the left, then wait for the light to turn green, or wait for the all-walk signal, and ride through the intersection. If you use the all-walk signal, please be sure to yield to pedestrians. If you're driving a car and are going straight on a green light, you should only pass people on bikes when it is safe to do so. If you're turning right on a green light, yield to people who are in or are riding through the bike box before making your turn.
So Kevin did a great job on that.
That's fun.
And then we looked at the results of the speed reduction on Lincoln, which is still kind of coming along. We talked about dockless bike share and stats in the future, kind of like we did here. Some of these things we made recommendations for, the next page, I think, shows the actual motions we made. And we don't have an official recommendation role to the City Council like the Traffic Commissioner Plan Commission does. There's nothing in our ordinance that says we have to approve anything or recommend anything. So it's all just, it's all advisory, and usually at Craig's request, if he wants some extra input on something, then we'll, we'll make a motion, make recommendations. So then when it's brought to council, he can say, "BPAC studied this," or "Looked at this, and we talked about, and this is what they recommended." I also put a link in there for crash reports, crash intersection reports. There's a New Bike at Illinois website. Another thing we tried was to respond to concerns downtown from business owners that people were riding bikes on sidewalks still. As you may know, there's some signs posted there that there's a $100 fine if you ride on those particular sidewalks, just downtown area. Normally, in most parts of town, it's okay to ride your bike on sidewalk. But because of pedestrian traffic and the, and the proximity of the door, of the doors to the sidewalks here, it can be a problem if people ride, ride bikes on these sidewalks. So instead of the sign that's about eight feet off the ground and not very noticeable and kind of foreboding, saying you'll get a $100 fine, we thought we'd try something a little bit more bicycle-friendly and put a dismount zone sticker. So Craig had him made up a, a test, basically a test sign, and taped it down the sidewalk and put a little sign next to it, saying we were testing this and asked for comments. And most business owners that commented didn't, didn't like it, basically. So the city engineer decided, decided not to go with that, but that was our best, best recommendation of what would actually work. of what would actually work.
But we haven't given up on it entirely. We plan to do some implementation on Goodwin Avenue near Durst. We have some doors there that open up to the sidewalk there, but we need the University Avenue project with IDOT to be installed first because they're going to actually take out some of the sidewalk that we would've put this down. So, we kind of view that as our next pilot, and then, so we haven't completely abandoned this yet, but I think that's a safer location to start with in downtown.
Just occurred to me, will the eight-foot-wide sidewalk on University Avenue that's going to be built be open to bikes?
Yes.
I believe so.
So, yeah, there's a list of recommendations by motion. I mean, I guess the answer is it's up to us, because the only reason that you can't ride bikes on the sidewalks downtown is because it's in our city code. So, if you wanna make it illegal to ride bikes on University, you could, but I don't think BPAC wouldn't recommend that because you can't really ride a bike on University Avenue very safely. But when you are riding your bike on a sidewalk, just for information, you always yield to pedestrians, and you shouldn't ride much faster than the pedestrians. You should basically ride at a pedestrian speed. So, yeah, these are the motions we made, the recommendations. This is just a picture of kind of that example of that vibrancy we were talking about. This makes an interesting walking destination. This is the Stranger Reduction Zone art piece by the Urbana Free Library, but you can see it from, you know, across the parking lot, and it kind of stirs your interest. So, if you're gonna cut across the parking lot anyway, you might swing by there, and it just makes walking through town a little bit more interesting. On the back page is our report card from our Bicycle Friendly Community application. So, it kind of shows you how they score us on different things and compare it to the average platinum level, which would be the next step up. That's what this column is. So, some things we're doing pretty well. The bike staff, we don't really have a full-time bike staff person, and we're lacking on the high-speed facilities for, so roads like Cunningham, that should help next time where you have the high speeds, or really two-speed, too-high speed to have bicycle lanes, so you actually have to have side path or something that people can use, at least to make the biggest connections. So, that's kind of the overview of that. I had a couple more slides to show, and then open up questions. So, I showed that one. So, just again, to give credit to a lot of our community partners, and I included Urbana Police Department in there because we so utilize the program where the first time you get a bicycle, a ticket, traffic ticket for doing something wrong on your bicycle, it's normally a $100 fine, I think, but you can get it reduced to $30 by doing the bikesafetyquiz.com. You can basically do a little education project online, and then you print out the certificate, bring it in, show it to the department to probably finance or somebody here, and they'll wipe the ticket off, but you still have to pay $30. But it's better than $100. So, and that works once. You can't do that more than once. I haven't done it once yet, so I'm okay. Some of our other partners, Champaign County Bikes, racing groups, Line Ice Cycling, Prairie Cycle Club is a big one, but these, they function real well in the education encouragement categories. Encouragement with all the, like, weekly bike rides and everything Prairie Cycle Club does. Champaign County Bikes does a lot of education, a lot of things with the schools. Safe walks to school, I think I had that in there, yeah. They do a lot with the schools. And then our local bike shops, too, like Neutral Cycle on Durst and Champaign Cycle, and the Free Bike Project where you can learn to fix your own bike. Those are all important in building the bicycle culture, and then encouragement and education, a lot of kind of socialization that functions as education as well, because people talk a lot about, you know, how they get from here to there, what routes do you take, and things like that. So, this month, or this month coming up is Bike Month. There's a calendar at cu-bike-month.org with some things on it, and there's actually something starting this Saturday at 10 o'clock. You can take a historic, or a tour of the rail trail, a bike tour, if you start at Walmart at 10 and ride to St. Joe, then you're on your own riding back, but they'll stop along the way and point out some interesting, interesting landscape and prairie features and things like that. I think you have to sign up for that, it's $3. There's lots of kinds of other things on the calendar. Bike to Work Day is May 1st. If you go to cu-bike-month.org and sign up for Bike to Work Day on May 1st, or Bike to School Day on May 8th, then you can get a nifty, exclusive, limited-edition t-shirt designed by a local designer. And, yep, just register for that. Don't have to pay anything, it's free. They do ask for a donation if you wanna make a donation. I think that's all I had. Did you have anything to add, Craig? Are there any questions?
Yeah, I'll open it up now to questions for them about biking in Urbana. Yeah, Mary Ellis?
So, I was curious, one of the recommendations was to transform some of the brick sidewalks to cement sidewalks, and I was wondering if you could speak to that a little bit?
That'll be coming up in the project on North Lincoln Avenue. It's just a couple of short sections where the, where, which street, is it Clark? No, it's--
It's Main. It would be the northeast corner of Main and Lincoln.
Yeah, so there's some unique treatments that the city wants to try there where the bike lane will turn into a side path for a little part to get across the intersection so you can use a crosswalk on your bike, basically. And in order to make that transition, it goes through the parkway and then onto what's currently a brick sidewalk, that'll be widened a little bit, and when you widen it, you wouldn't wanna have it be half-concrete and half-brick. Could probably make it all brick, but that's not as good to ride on. So, that'll be coming up to the City Council in a little while, probably.
Yeah, that would be, so there's a brick sidewalk ordinance. That particular location will require City Council approval to convert to concrete.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And I'll return the seat, chairmanship, to you, Bill.
You can go ahead and adjourn if you want.
Well, seeing the weather business before the City Council, I call us adjourned.